I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask to silence your cell phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. We remain standing for Marjorie Parker, a bus driver from 1969 through 1989, who passed away on February 16, 2022, and for Doris Hubert, an art teacher in the district from 1969 through 1997, who passed away on March 2, 2022, and for Maureen Worth, an elementary teacher from 1957 through 1991, who passed away on March 4, 2022. Thank you. Moving on to 4.0 presentations, we've got 4.1, a Lancaster Educational and Alumni Foundation donation. Mr. Mishka?
As a former and current Vice President of LEAF and very importantly, an alumnus of Lancaster School, it is truly gratifying to be here tonight and see that this project comes to fruition, meaningfully funding for the turf field. This has truly been a community effort which was kicked off in 2015 when Russell Salvatore announced his $300,000 donation accounting for over half of LEAF's pledge. We also would not be here tonight making a $500,000 donation without the generous support of our community. Topping that list, I wish to acknowledge the following. Number one, Chuck Marino and everyone in the Lancaster Pugh Soccer Club. Number two, the marching band boosters currently led by co-presidents Christine Dusk and Karen Lewandowski, where they're close the Gath campaign. And third, Coach Julie Bicherry and the Lancaster High School girls lacrosse team, who have been a driving force in seeing that this donation come to fruition. We cannot wait to see the turf field become a cornerstone of activity for the district and our community. Thank you very much. These are members of both of our LEAF who work very diligently, having meat raffles, you name it, we did it. So different items to raise these funds. Again, thank you to them. The treasurer gave the check to the Assistant Superintendent for Business. I don't know where she is or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mishka and the entire LEAF board. So, you know, as I reflect here tonight, it's so rewarding to see the purpose of an organization that I was honored to be an original member of being fulfilled. We are grateful for the unwavering support of the Lancaster Alumni and Educational Foundation, its volunteers and donors in their quest to provide enhancements to our district beyond what the Board of Education can provide in the general budget. With this generous donation, they have exemplified their mission of building a bridge between the students of Lancaster Central School District, the alumni, and community members. I greatly look forward to attending events on the turf field, knowing the collective effort that went into giving our students and this community this beautiful new space. Thank you all again. That's going to be really hard to follow, but 4.2, we've got our Comprehensive District Education Plan, or CDEP.
I think we're on now. Fantastic. Good evening, everyone. In preparation for this, a few months ago, I asked Mrs. Sandy Janek to make sure that we don't follow any really cute kids, which we didn't, but the $500,000 donation, maybe tough one. Tough act to follow, Mr. Sage, as you said. We're excited to present. We're excited to be here. So we'll get into it. We're excited about the generous donation because it's fantastic news for our students and the community. So, good evening. I'm Andrew Kuhful, Assistant Superintendent, board members, members of LEAF, Lancaster community. We're excited to present our Comprehensive District Education Plan, our CDEP, that are known as our five-year plan, to you this evening. It's certainly been a long and winding road to get to this point, and in the midst of a pandemic, it would have been easy to only focus on the here and now, the students in front of us and making sure we're getting through each and every day. Therefore, I would like to thank all the members of our CDEP core team, the teachers, the administrators, district administrators, our principals, for maintaining a focus on the future as well as the here and now, and never taking their eye off the prize. Their perseverance has been truly remarkable, and I'd like to thank them. Some of our core team members, as we talked, are standing in front of you today. We had over 40 members, K through 12, teachers, faculty and staff, who are part of the core team, and you'll see a good chunk of us today here, over 12, or 12 of us. Their leadership, their participation has been fantastic, and it's been, like I said, a long and winding road, and we'll go through that process in just a few short moments. The purpose, just to contextualize CDEP, what it is, the how, and then the why. So, put simply, CDEP is our five-year plan as it pertains to student learning and student achievement. The how is twofold. First, we're going to discuss tonight the formation of the plan. How did we get here tonight with the details of the goals and underlying themes? And then, two, we want to briefly touch upon our infrastructure, what we have in place that's going to help carry us through the next five years to help our students attain the goals set forth. The why, if we step back a brief moment and we think back to where we were the summer going into the 2021, 2020, 21 school year, there was a phrase that we often said, maximize student learning and the student experience. The meaning of those words factored into every decision that we made, and those words still ring true. In terms of the why, as it pertains to CDEP, we want to make sure that we do everything we can as a school district to make sure that we maximize student learning, to prepare our students, all of our students, for life after Lancaster. So to begin talking a little bit further about the how, I'm going to turn it over to Director of Secondary Education, Andrew Crasman.
Thank you, Dr. Kuhful. One quick, one more thank you to all the participants and everyone who had participated in this process. When we first started this process a little over two years ago, we initially started with a survey to a variety of different stakeholder groups around the district, and we had received 250 responses to that survey. And with those survey data, what we were able to do was to formulate our initial goals and to formulate our initial themes and kind of gave us some perspective as where we wanted to go over the course of the next five years. After collecting that data and putting some of those pieces together, we then created five different focus group teams from the seven different schools from across the district, along with some facilitators from 31 Voces. And with those focus groups, we had 71 different people who had given us some greater feedback, who helped us kind of hone in and really kind of narrow down the goals and the themes that we're going to talk to you about a little bit later on. And then, once we got the focus groups input, then we met with our core author team, which was 41 teachers and administrators from across the district, a chunk of us that you see before you here tonight. And this group really was the final authors, if you will, of the goals and the themes that we're going to be presenting to you tonight. So to give this to you in a little bit larger of a context, as soon as we, as 2019 ended, we moved into 2020, we started with that initial survey, we held our focus groups and put together our draft goals. And as Dr. Kuhful said before, it has been a long and winding road if we applaud everyone's perseverance in making this plan a reality in the midst of navigating a global pandemic. So, once we had conducted that original survey, we had gotten the information from the various stakeholder groups, took that information to our focus groups, and we began to shape those goals and themes. We took those drafts to our core writing team, and tonight, this is our final product in which we're going to present to you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my good credit and colleague, Dr. Marchioli, to talk to you a little bit about the district's mission and vision.
Thank you, Mr. Crasman. You've all seen this. It's our mission statement. It's what we believe, and it's what encompasses our work. And we've said this time and time again, but especially through the pandemic, that we need to fulfill our mission to our students. But as we went through the CDEP process, we found that we had some other deeply held beliefs and commitments about the district and our students, and we'd like to share those with you right now. So first, we'll talk about our belief statement.
We believe all children can learn.
We believe students learn best when they are engaged with the content, skills, and their peers.
We believe in creating a culture, climate, and community in which all students feel welcome, supported, and valued.
We believe that teaching and learning should be meaningful, engaging, and rigorous.
And finally, we believe how we learn is as important as what we learn. In order to support those beliefs and help us achieve what we believe in, we have the following commitments.
We will never give up on students.
We'll help all students find their pathway, whether it be college or career-focused.
We will foster meaningful collaboration between all members of our school community.
We will challenge our students, teachers, administration, and staff to reach their full potential with the necessary support to be successful.
We will cultivate an environment where students are self-aware and are able to manage their emotions and behaviors.
So what you see next, and in front of you, there are some one-pagers that I think Dr. Kuhful is going to hand out to all of you. But with the input that we had received from all of the core team meetings, we had gone through multiple, like six or seven, eight different drafts of an infographic. And what we wanted to do was to show the connections between the goals and the relationship to the themes, and that is the representation that you see on the PowerPoint slide above. We had multiple iterations of this, and we want to thank Kim Grimal and Cheryl Randall for making it more aesthetically pleasing than what we had put together originally. So thank you for your work on that. And looking in the graphic, you will notice that everything is interconnected. Nothing lives in isolation. Everything is interconnecting the tree and the roots. Our underlying themes are the supports of our tree. These are the tools and the mindsets that we will utilize to create and make our goals reality. The branches are the goals we wish to accomplish with our students, but are supported by our underlying themes, again, those roots of the tree. Now I'm going to turn it back over to the rest of the team to talk about some of the underlying themes and the student goals.
The underlying themes of college, career, and civic readiness, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, professional learning communities, social and emotional learning, and culture, climate, and inclusivity are the roots of the tree. They're necessary for our CDEP tree, but more importantly, for our students to grow and thrive. Our focus and the core team members identify these as the five most critical aspects that will underpin our measurable goals that we'll talk about in just a minute.
So the first is college, career, and civic readiness. They're purposely placed together because they cannot stand alone. You can't be career-ready without being college-ready and being civic-ready as well. So it means bringing the workplace to the school, bringing the school to the workplace. And this is giving students access to real-world experiences, whether it's in school or outside of school, but at their correct developmental level, so that they're prepared and therefore have options when they enter adulthood, whether it be college and/or career. Many refer to this as being future-ready, being ready for whichever future they choose upon graduating from Lancaster High School.
For curriculum instruction and assessment, our teachers at the same grade level and across the same content areas are working very hard to collaborate and will continue to do that to create curriculum maps and pacing guides so students, no matter what classroom they are in, have equitable access to our curriculum, standards, instructional strategies, and assessments. This will allow all of our students to achieve the highest possible level they can achieve.
And for professional learning communities, this is an ongoing process in which we work together in collaborative teams focused around common goals to better student achievement. Essentially, this is how we do business here in Lancaster.
The social and emotional learning is a special one because realistically, for years and generations throughout school districts, the focus has been on social-emotional supports. And what the shift, and it's an ideological shift, to social-emotional learning, where genuinely it talks about how you can reasonably and developmentally progress students to be their own advocates, and what structures and supports are put in place at the school districts and the buildings of the district level to kind of support that path to encourage that student-level empowerment. So that's a really nice one. It's really special because what the focus is going to be is on formal and informal structures, excuse me, structures, to make sure that that's continued.
For culture, climate, inclusivity, our job is to make sure that all of our students, every race, gender, ethnicity, ability level, et cetera, are supported in reaching their full potential while in our Lancaster schools. In sum, we want all of our students to feel safe, loved, and celebrated.
So next, we'll take a look at the goals. Please understand that these goals provide us a focus for the next five years. We will still be a district that prioritizes music and the arts, our career-themed academies, athletics, clubs, organizations, STEM, world languages, and a host of other areas. These will all be part of our focus. As we go on with the presentation, I'd like to point out the logic of it too. Just so you understand our thinking, we want to explain why our colleagues are going to be presenting these in the order in which they will. First, you will see literacy. We know that literacy is at the heart of everything we do. You cannot succeed if you are not able to interact with text and language. As we move through the goals, you'll see that all of them come off the trunk of our tree on our infographic. Each goal from there supports higher levels of success and ultimately gets to the theme of college and career and civic readiness. Finally, we'll discuss our student systems that will start in kindergarten and work all the way up through graduation for our students. Mrs. Marsonelli and Mrs. Cook will start with K-3 literacy.
Our literacy goal is to increase the percentage of students who are reading within the appropriate grade level band to 100% by 2026. In our K-3 buildings, the number-one most important subject that we tackle is literacy. Literacy is the foundation of all the other subjects. Reading text is involved in all areas of our lives. Every subject, sign, manual, web page, social media posts, everything. First grade, we begin teaching students how to crack the code. That means teaching phonics skills like letter identification, letter sounds, sight words, strategies for decoding unknown words, and early comprehension skills.
After the kids crack the code, we start to move into some fancier comprehension skills, such as inferencing, making connections, identifying themes, analyzing perspectives, learning about new topics, and many more. The students transition from what we call "learning to read" to "reading to learn." No matter which path they take after high school, four-year college, two-year college, vocational school, they all need to become proficient teachers. And the magic starts at our K-3 schools. We will now turn it over to you to talk about 3-3 ELA.
Thank you. So following up your graphic from literacy and then branching off, I believe it's to the left, our goal of English Language Arts. In addition, student scores will demonstrate a 5% increase per year to achieve a Level 4. Research has shown that a positive correlation between... So essentially, what this means is that the better the students are doing on their ELA exams, the better they're naturally going to perform in math. So ultimately, this isn't just going to have a positive impact on the success that they have through their school years, but it will have a positive impact as they move through the labor market. As we know, coming off of this pandemic, addressing student gaps and achievement is critical to student success. The New York State ELA exams are a tool we may use to gauge our students' overall proficiency and better prepare them for the future. Currently, looking at our proficiency scores, they range from 38% to 72%, with our subgroup white females who are scoring above the poverty line, outperforming their peers. It will be through collective work, training with teachers, and working together to instill a love of reading across genres, supporting critical thinking and problem-solving, that we can work to achieve this goal. This will support our students throughout their futures as well as translate to higher achievement levels on their standardized assessments. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Marchioli to talk about writing.
The ability to communicate in writing is an essential aspect of K-12 academic achievement, and more importantly, it's crucial in just about every career. This goal spans across every grade level and every content area. Our teams of teachers will work together to create benchmarks for writing that are appropriate and relevant to those individual areas. In research that was conducted by Fisher and Frye, they say, "Students must be taught to write and then be expected to write for a variety of purposes to a variety of audiences, including in mathematics, science, and social studies. As part of the building of the writing prowess of students, they must write routinely, both short and long pieces. As part of a comprehensive writing curriculum, students' writing fluency should be fostered, and students should participate in lessons designed to build their composing skills, and they must learn to write from sources that they read across the curriculum." And that will be the main focus of this goal as we move forward. And next, I'm going to give it to Mrs. Lackey.
For science, we have two goals. One, in regards to living environment. So for our living environment goal, it is to increase the number of students earning proficiency, excuse me, on the exam as well as in the course in eighth grade to 100% by 2026.
Our second goal is to increase the number of students of a given cohort earning proficiency in at least one physical science Regents course, in the course and on the Regents examination, to 100% by 2026.
Currently, in living environment at the middle school in eighth grade, we have, on average, 62% of our students earning proficiency on the exam and in the course. This comes from the hard work that the teachers are doing at the middle school, but also at the early grade levels at K-6 with the science kids, as well as Amplify Science. Additionally, for the physical science goal, currently, we are, on average, between 80 and 85% of our students earning proficiency on an exam at the high school.
Now, when we talk a little bit about the why, and we look specifically at the living environment and the physical setting goal, what you find is those are two courses that are relative kind of gatekeepers to the next steps when students experience the variety of different options that Lancaster High School has. This could be from an AP course to an honors-level course to a college credit-bearing course or anything else that has to do with science that has a compelling elective connected to it. So by moving the bridge just back a little bit further, when a student goes into the next level, they are then provided with a myriad of options to go in any specific direction they so choose. Additionally, you'll see some synchronicity over the next couple of goals. We kind of talk about long-term outcomes of students specifically as they progress towards graduation. When we think about the two gatekeeper courses to the rest of their science curriculum in the high school, those are also typically gatekeepers to our advanced designation diplomas. And what we know, and what you'll see in a few minutes with regard to our post-secondary outcomes, this goal is really important because what it is synonymous with is our students engaging in equality and rigorous curriculum to be able to attain towards obtaining their advanced designation diploma, which allows them to be more competitive at the next level. At this point, I'm going to pass it back to Mrs. Lackey for the algebra goal.
Our algebra goal is to increase the number of students of a given cohort earning proficiency in the Regents exam as well as in the course to 85% in eighth grade by 2026. Currently, over the last decade or so, we have had eighth graders taking algebra at the middle school. On average, we have between 31 and 38% of our students earning proficiency. This is not just done at the middle school. This is something that a ton of work has been done and will continue to be done at the K-6 levels, which Mr. Hare will touch on a little bit at this point.
In order to achieve this goal, we need to push ourselves. At the K-6 level, teachers continue to provide a strong, aligned mathematics curriculum in each grade. K-3 buildings have increased the number of AIS providers in mathematics, and Williams Street School has established a math lab course for sixth-grade students. This year, we have reconfigured our sixth-grade schedule, allowing us to increase the number of students enrolled in our accelerated math program as well as extend the program to that of a full-year course.
As we said, we've been accelerating students in algebra in eighth grade for several years. This will open up even more opportunities for our students at the high school, whether it be in college-level math classes that you'll hear about in a little bit, or just in general, other electives or other internships or course offerings that they can pursue at the high school. This allows our students with the appropriate support to be able to be successful. At the middle school level specifically, we are working on adding in math labs over the next couple of years to support all students in achieving their success within mathematics. We have found that with the research that shows that students taking algebra with the appropriate support earlier in their academic career allows them to be even more successful at their current grade levels, but also in their future... but also in their future math courses. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hoofle and Mr. Craseman to talk about college math.
Thank you, Mrs. Lackey. So the next, the college credit math goal, you'll notice directly bookends to the Algebra I goal. So the goal here is to increase the number of students in a given cohort earning college credit in mathematics through a dual enrollment. We have several dual enrollment options that exist at the high school all through SUNY, pre-calculus, calculus, and college math, or an advanced placement course, which is accredited by the College Board, statistics, calculus, and computer science A. So this goal really is a twofold extension. There's the Algebra I piece where it's the bookend to that because if you think about it, if we have more students that are taking a high school level course in middle school, then we need to make sure that we're providing appropriate challenging opportunities for our students in high school to prepare them for college or for life's next steps. However, over the course of the past five years, we've had a math goal in Algebra II, where that goal was to have 80% of our students take and pass the Algebra II regents course and exam. And over the course, the past five years, we've gone from 55 to 79% of our students taking pass Algebra II. There have been some COVID exemptions with the regents exam, but still 79% of our kids got through Algebra II. So this goal will also be an extent, extension of that. 79% of our kids are getting through Algebra II, so what's now is next for them, whether it's college math, calculus, or whatever comes next. And to talk a little more about the why, Dr. Koof.
College math, in many ways, is the gatekeeper to student success in college. One of the things that we talked about, and what does that mean in New York, but also across the nation? If students are not successful in college math, their time in college gets extended. The amount of time, effort, and money that they put in gets extended. Often, they'll toil in remedial classes and not get that credit they need to advance to a bachelor's degree. This goal really embodies the fact that we want our students, Lancaster students, taking math classes, college credit math classes with our teachers while they have their support over the course of a year as opposed to a semester. Those are things that we believe in as a core team, that we believe in as a district. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Candela and I'll leave Mr. Dixon to talk about the college credit goal.
So our college credit goal is to increase the number of students of a given cohort to 85% who have successfully completed at least three dual enrollment courses and two AP courses during their four years at Lancaster High School. One of the exciting things about this goal, especially as a high school administrator, is to see the outcome of all the other interconnectedness between every other goal leading up to the point that a student could get to the level that they could potentially go to college with a substantial amount of credit, whether it be AP or dual enrollment connected to it. One of the nice things about this goal specifically is there's a lot of data points connected to it. First and foremost, specifically, our class profile screams at us every single year that a large percentage of our students over the last three years, around 85%, are going on to post-secondary institutions when they graduate Lancaster High School. If you go back before the pandemic, there's been times where that percentage has eclipsed 90, 90 to 92%. Why is that important? Because this goal connects specifically to the post-secondary outcomes that our students are telling us they want to attain towards every single school year. Why is that also important? Because when we compare that to what our current profile looks like in actual AP enrollment, only about 40% of our students that graduate high school actually take one AP course and successfully pass that corresponding AP examination for college credit. So the nice thing about this is it's such a tangible goal that has some interconnectedness between all the other goals, but there clearly is some work to be done where we can be responsive to what our students are telling us each and every year about what their post-secondary outcome is. We'll go a step further. Our students, when they're in front of our teachers, perform at such a high level on our AP examinations. Dr. Koof would have said, "We want our students in front of our, our teachers for college credit math courses. We want them in front of our, our teachers for college credit, all college credit courses and AP courses as well." Because what we find is nationally, we succeed the average of passing rate of AP examination at around a 75% rate. The national average is about 62%. So not only do our students perform better, but when they're in front of our teachers who know the curriculum, who've been trained on it, who can expect that they're going to assist them and get them to the point of actually passing that examination, that's a special thing to watch. Now finally, we have a substantial amount of pre-existing college agreements, whether it be through Tropeir College, SUNY Erie, Hilbert College. We allow and provide a quantity of college credit bearing courses, which, when you compare to almost any institution in this region, we offer some of the best, some of the, some of the most premier options for our students. Now, we'll qualify this by essentially saying, "We know colleges aren't for everyone." We have a trades academy, we have CTE programs that students directly participate in. But what we know now is if we expect that our, our students expect that we're going to be responsive to their goals to attain towards college credit, we're going to adapt to that. And what that means is we'll better prepare them long-term. Mr. Dixon, I know you have more.
Thank you, Mr. Candela. I am such a teacher that teaches dual enrollment courses. Had to become an adjunct professor with SUNY Erie in order to do so. Been doing it for several years along with many of my business colleagues through the Academy Finance and other business-related courses. Our experience has been that these students are capable at all levels. So to have options after you leave high school, you must be capable of upper-level classwork, such as a dual enrollment or an AP course. So since most of our students have indicated they want to go on to college, this goal makes it even that much more necessary. So why? So I can give you some anecdotal evidence, things that I've seen throughout the years. We've graduated up to, I think we've issued over 800 credits worth of college credit to students. And what does that transpire into real life terms? Students graduate early, semester early, sometimes even as much as a year early with the accumulated credits they have. Or they simply graduate on time. They're not there five and a half years, they're there four years, which they should be, only there for four years. That is a massive cost savings for the community members in Lancaster and the students that go in there. It also means an earlier earnings potential. They can start their career that they hope to have much earlier on. They have a clear idea of what their career interests are. So they have taken these courses and they start to realize, "Oh, I'm skilled in that, I'm not skilled in that. Maybe I should pursue the first one and not the second one." They've learned that through the rigor of the courses. So they pick more wisely if they go on to college. Instead of struggling to say, "Change majors halfway through," they have a better, clearer picture when they leave high school. Therefore, they also have the freedom, if they have all these credits before they go to college, that frees up their scheduling in college. They can now explore more career opportunities while they're in school as well because of scheduling flexibility. And a career-bound student, a student that has said, "I'm not going on to college," but they still need to be, have the rigor of if they were going to go to college. Just think of the problem-solving skills that an auto mechanic needs when they go into it. They need to know how to problem solve, and they need to know how to do these things. Those are the rigors that come from college-level work, whether you go on to college or not. So I would now like to pass it off to Ms. Gannon and to Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. As you can tell, we've set some really high standards for our seat-up goals. And to be able to achieve that, we have to provide supports to our students. And that's really where MTSS comes in. So MTSS is a multi-tiered system of academic and behavioral support that really range from in-class interventions to individualized skill development for our students. Every single one of our buildings currently has a great MTSS practice in place. And what we're looking to do is take the best aspects from every single one of our buildings and combine them to not only create a consistent program, but to also really get some great evidence-based strategies for our students to be successful.
Thanks, Erin. And as Erin had pointed out, we have a long history in the district, going back to the days of RTI or Response to Intervention, which is the forerunner of MTSS. Where, and even in the secondary area, we were some of the forerunners of developing programs to intervene early and often for children that are struggling academically or behaviorally. So we want to intervene for all students as early as often as possible. We know how important it is at any age level, be it preschoolers, school age, at any level, all the way up through to 12th grade to help our students when they need the help. And you've heard that throughout the presentation, throughout, while we have some extraordinarily, I think, lofty goals and we're challenging ourselves, we also want to provide a lot of support along the way to all students so they can all be successful. So in terms of, of how we're going to do a lot of training in the district, we're going to support our teams that work to develop programs for children, and we're going to have a whole array of support systems and programs and interventions that are going, that are going to make a huge difference. We're already doing it, but in Lancaster, I think we're always looking to, I think Dr. Bailey calls it like tinker with success. It's continuous improvement, and, and we're ready. And I think the why is, is there's no better time. Let's, let's do it now. Let's get our systems, they're good, but they can get better. Let's intervene early, let's intervene often, and let's get after it with all kids so they can all be successful. So MTSS ties it together for everything, and I'm, I'm very proud, I'm really excited about working on this. Thank you.
So just bringing up the infographic one more time. Hopefully now the underlying themes, the roots, the branches, which are the goals and the connections between them, the industry and the infographic, have been brought to life a little bit more. It's important to note, and I think we hope that it's clear, that we have set the bar extremely high. Lofty was just used, for all students, not just a selection of them, all students. This is really only possible, and I think Mr. Armstrong just touched on this previously, because of the great work that has occurred in the past, the past decade, the past two decades, building the infrastructure to be able to set goals such as these and the continuity of vision that this district has had over the last several decades. With high expectations, the message should not just be, "Let's all work harder." That's not the message. As always, our district will set the bar high, and we will continue to support our students as they strive to attain the goals and to support the faculty and staff to help meet the students where they are. With that, I'll turn it over to Andy Craseman to bring it home.
For those of you still awake, this is the last slide. So what you'll notice, at the very beginning, we said the how. How did we get here? And we talked about the survey, we talked about the focus groups, we talked about the core team and everything that went into putting this plan together. Now, the last part of the how is, how do we move forward and what are those next steps? Well, those next steps are going to be the creations of plans of actions. It's going to be a collaborative process with teachers, administrators, OCS people, and other people from the outside, people from ECC or post-secondary institutions. But it's going to be a collaborative process moving forward to set, to know that the goals are set, and now to set action steps and put plans into motion and reevaluate those plans on a year-to-year basis until we reach our goals. This will be done through our building planning teams, it'll be done with department chairs, teacher leaders, mentors, tech mentors, curriculum committees, all of, all of us working together in tandem, in collaboration, working towards the goals that we presented to you tonight. And with that being said, thanks so much. If you have any questions, Dr. Koof is right there. Does anybody have any questions? All kidding aside. Duly noted. Kids would have been a good touch.
All right, I, I, I think I was wrong. That was, you know, definitely something that could follow that because, you know, I think this is what it's really all about. And what a dream team of administrators and teachers we had up there because, you know, and I really, I look at this, the, the district logo with the roots. And I love what you did there because, I mean, really, it ties it all together. You know, I look at that logo all the time, and I think, wow, those roots are so important. And Mr. Armstrong said, you know, "We're good, right? But we can, we, we want to be better." And I love that drive that you all have because this is what it's really all about, right? The kids, and, you know, I love that you focused on the roots. The, the roots really do bring it home, and thank you all for that. It was an amazing presentation. All right, on to 5.0 correspondence. We have 16 emails on record. And to 6.0, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular session 6.1 from February 7th, 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 6.2, do you have a motion for the budget work session from February 28th, 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? And then backing up to 4.1, the Lancaster Education Alumni Foundation donation, we do need a motion to accept. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? All right, you can cash that big check. All right, on to 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Thank you, Mrs. Marzinnelli. All right, anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. Also, the LCA just wants to echo the sentiments to congratulate you for raising the $500,000 for the turf field. It's going to be for the benefit of our present classes, our music students, and our athletic department. And I will also say that the teachers certainly enjoyed the casual days that helped us with that goal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Onto 8.0, board reports. Any reports from board members? And 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Bailey?
Yep, it's already been said, but thank you so much, DeLeef. It's been a long time coming. 2015, a lot of work. And I think about Julie Buccheri and her girls as the Energizer bunnies that kept it going. There were so many people involved in that, but thank you to everyone. It's a real great evening to share that and to accept that. And it also, you know, from a board and superintendent perspective, it honors and respects our, respect, respects our pledge and promise to this community to make that turf field a zero percent tax impact. So that's culminated and seen in fruition tonight as well. So congratulations to all involved. And what a great team. What a great presentation. So thank you so much to everyone that came together to do that important work, build those goals, and to, you know, continue tinkering toward utopia, as they say, John. And I'm going to keep on saying that because we have a lot of work to do in a lot of areas, but we continue to tinker and keep on plugging away. So thank you so much for, to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Onto 10.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? And then 11.0, new business. 11.1, do I have a motion on 11.1.1 personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Anyone against? Motion carries? On to 12.0, business and financial items. Can I have a motion on 12.0 for the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Onto 12.2, can I have a motion on policy adoption 6220 for temporary personnel? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.3, can I have a motion on policy adoption 5676 Privacy and Security for student data and teacher and principal data? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.4 is a policy first reading, 6140 Employee Medical Examinations. This one is for information only. We will have two more readings. 12.5, can I have a motion to appoint election workers? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.6, can I have a motion for the legal notice, annual budget proposition vote and trustee Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.7, can I have a motion to accept the internal audit report and correction action Mr. Davenport, does the audit committee have a recommendation?
Yeah, the audit committee met earlier this evening. We reviewed the reports and the corrective actions and recommend that they be accepted by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.0, 12.8, can I have a motion for the various providers of special education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Can I have a motion on 12.9 to approve the contract with Williamsville Central School Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.10, can I have a motion to approve the contract with Frontier Central School District? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.11, have a motion on the tax surcharge with Rite Aid? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.12, can I have a motion on the tax surcharge with Palter Oil? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.13, can I have a motion on the tax surcharge with VKV Realty? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.14, can I have a motion for the tax surcharge with USF Holland? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.15, can I have a motion for the tax surcharge for Speedway? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.16, can I have a motion for the appraisal approval for Italian Gardens? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.17, can I have a motion for the donation acceptance for Dick's Sporting Goods, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? All right, 12.18, can I have a motion for the donation acceptance from the Ilg family? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.19, can I have a motion for the food service operating reports dated January 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.20, can I have a motion for the surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.21, can I have a motion for the surplus textbooks? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.22, can I have a motion for surplus uniforms? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.23, can I have a motion for the amended 2021, 2022 Food Service Department Budget? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.24, can I have a motion for request for proposal acceptance, occupational and physical therapy services? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.25, can I have a motion for the contract with Shannon Jeffries? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? I have a motion on 12.26, contract with GPG Music? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? On to 12.27, can I have a motion on the contract for Sound Transformations Musical Therapy Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Just as a note, Mr. Jackson is excused. On to 12.28, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with IVC Engineering PC? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? On to 12.29, can I have a motion for the AIA contract with Encoreus Group? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.30, can I have a motion for the bid award for Hillview Make Ready Project? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.31, can I have a motion for the AIA contract with Northeast Versification, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.32, can I have a motion on the state environmental quality review for 2022, 2023 on the Capitol Outlay Project? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.33, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.34, can I have a motion on the confidential employees' contract extension? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.35, can I have a motion on the Lancaster Central Teachers Association Memorandum of Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? 12.36, can I have a motion to change the terms and conditions of confidential employees' Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? And then we do have another motion. I'm moving that we approve the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel Memorandum of Agreement and contractual retirement benefit. Can I have a second? Any comments or questions? And just so you know, that's the one in front of you. All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? And that's 12.37 for the record. On to 13.0, public hearing. Any person who notified the district clerk per Policy 1514 may speak at this time. Speakers must first be recognized and then identify themselves by stating their name and address. The time limit to speak will be limited to five minutes per person. Welcome all to, who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This time is set aside for public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Again, each person is given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This meeting is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we won't be engaging any dialogue with members of the community this evening, but rest assured we are listening carefully and take seriously what you have to say. I would like to ask you to demonstrate respect for us and one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Additionally, please know as a public school district, we are bound by various laws, regulations, and policies regarding the privacy of students and staff, including the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. Moreover, the board policy prohibits public comment on any topic directly or indirectly related to employee personnel information or any topic that potentially may disclose information about a particular student. Accordingly, please do not comment on the performance or conduct of individual staff members and/or specific confidential student-related matters. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be barred from addressing the board in the future. Thank you so much for your cooperation. All right, first we have Keal Ilg. Okay, if he comes in, we'll recognize him at the end. Number two, Jason Coleman.
Good evening, board members. My name's Jason Coleman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and thank you for all that you do for the students of the Lancaster School District. I'm with the American Cancer Society, cancer control physician in Lancaster, New York. Purpose of my visit tonight is to discuss our national efforts in preventing cancers through increased vaccination against the human papillomavirus, HPV. This virus is as prevalent as the common cold, estimated that approximately 80% of the population will be infected by this virus at some point in their life. Virus most likely will cause no symptoms, and instead will find someplace in the body to hide. Most can cure this virus through their own immunity, but there are others that won't. We have no way of knowing which will be the case for which patient. For those that don't, the HPV virus will be the cause of numerous cancers in both male and female patients, including cancers of the oral cavity, parangeal cavity, and urogenital areas of the body. Most of these patients that will be diagnosed with cancer due to HPV this year were infected by the virus in their adolescent years, in their early twenties, when they did not have the opportunity to be protected by the vaccine. But the children of your school district and districts across the nation can benefit from this unique opportunity to prevent cancer now. New York State pediatricians and parents are doing relatively well with their vaccination efforts against other diseases like measles, mumps, rubella, whooping cough, where vaccination rate's about 90%. However, vaccination rates for the HPV virus hover around 60%. We can do much better. American Cancer Society is pushing for a national vaccination rate of 80% by the year 2026. If we're successful, we can prevent thousands of new cancer diagnoses in this generation of children. In fact, we have seen success in other countries that have achieved an 80% vaccination rate. Australia, for example, they're on track to radically cervical cancer by the year 2035, and we would like to see the same for our children. Maybe ask me why I am talking about this health-related topic here at a school board meeting. Well, the school works very hard to educate our children and prepare them to meet the challenges of non-ceramic world. You're a credible source of information that parents can trust. On this issue, we have seen ever-increasing reliance on social media posts for medical information, instead of parents having questions directed at their pediatricians, their children's pediatricians, and engaging in the discussion on the evidence and the science. We need to work together to stop misinformation that's being disseminated and consumed by parents, children, and communities. I'd like tonight to be the first step in the dialogue between our organizations as to how we can work together on this issue. We have lots of work to do. Information on the evidence and the science pertaining to this issue can be found at the CDC website, cdc.org, and the American Cancer Society website, cancer.gov. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I understand that you can't engage in questions. So I'd like to thank you for helping us in my mind.
Thank you so much, Mr. Coleman. Next, we have Bruce Burton.
Hi, my name is Steve. I'm a good reader for that situation. Since we have this community that started, put on that back desk, I want to know if anything, if anything, I hate about this, is it crucible, is there anything that you have tried to implement other than the presentation I saw that can build this, because it would be a shame. that has black, like, and I want to know, is there anything, anything that you are trying to implement, other than the presentation I saw that I've been dealing with this, because it would be a shame if our children didn't have a whole understanding of the culture, understanding why they dress a certain way, why they worship a certain, why they speak a certain, why they smell a certain, and our community is ignorant of that, but they're not aware of that. I think it's not a team that's, every child, oh. I became educated because of the negative experiences that I went through as being a majority of black community with white teachers that mistreated me. So I became educated, so that I could be prepared. And I did. I have made some social statements that, while I was twenty years old, and I learned that if we can get that young mind to understand what I'm experiencing, understand why, before I told you, one of my friends I worked with in the office, I used to work at Howard Johnson, and he was a black kid. And in pain, time to time, when a young white child, he began to scream and yell at the end of the song, a black man. And I would never be different in a part of that community, because the experience of what we deal with, of being educated, we were bad. We go home and feel after going, even our aunts or our students, we go back, feel, and come back. Plus, then we're on the ground. But I just wanted to see if we could just, see if anything we can do, or it's being done, but that can be, because the community is changing, it's changing in the city of Atlanta, too. But I feel that the whole, the whole society is changing. But if there's anything that I can do, I think you can do, and I'm not saying that I'm not ready. There's just something for me to do, but when I look at my, I see that I can do that, and that makes it more better.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. And while we won't have any public comment, Dr. Vallee would like to, you know, meet with you and discuss. And then we've got Reverend Mark Blue.
Good evening. I really enjoyed the presentation from staff and I enjoyed the presentation of the chair, although it started going in my pocket. I'm Reverend Mark, where I live at Seven Little Bear Ranch, and I am a student of the rest of this area. I also serve as the president for the Buffalo Chapel of the NWACP. One of the things that I've been encouraged about in the presentation, it talked about inclusion, but most of all, it talked about preparing the students as they leave Lancaster. And that's very important. It's important because diversity is where we are right now, and we need to make sure that not only do we have it in our teaching, but diversity in faculty and staff as well. As Bruce Burton mentioned, growing up in Buffalo, not having a male teacher or even a black teacher. People need that diversity, because if not, they'll only get it one-sided in one way. It's very important that we have that cultural diversity, because then we learn how to understand one another. A student may say, "That's bad." "You mean it's bad?" No, no, no. That means good, because that's good. But if we don't have that, then people will not be able to understand each other in their culture, in their diversity, in the way that we express ourselves. So it's very important, as our melting-hot society continues to grow, that we learn to adapt and adapt it, because only seeing one demographic, when you see others, they'll look at you like you're strange. In Japan, the myth was that black people had terrors. And I went to Japan, I'm also a retired military, and people were looking behind me as if something was coming out of my barrier. But those myths are out there, and we need to dispel those myths by giving them a well-rounded education and dealing with the cultures and the virtues that are out there. So I'm just approaching this, and I'm not saying it's not happening, but I'm saying that we need to look at things, not just half-full or half-fifty. A friend of mine said, "People look at their glass half-full of water, half-fifty of water." My question is, where does the water come from? So as we continue to grow, and as we continue to expand, and as we continue to look at the things that are out there, we need to make sure that we give all of our children an opportunity to grow and thrive and dispel myths that some of the cultures are placed on individuals. So I've just come to address that, and hopefully, if you're doing it, you can do more, and I will also lend myself to do whatever I can to help this.
Thank you, Reverend Blue. And did Mr. Ilg? Onto 14.0, An Executive Session. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? That effectively ends the meeting for tonight. We do have our budget work session, our final of the amazing trilogy, April 4th, 2022, here at Williams Street School. And then we have our next regular session, April 19th, which is a Tuesday, at Lancaster High School. Thank you all so much for coming.